Wait one more minute, we're live on YouTube, we're recording and we're live on Zoom. All right. It is 7:30? So I think we are ready to kick off. Thank you everyone for joining us this evening. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the home news Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118, and on Vio Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, January 7, 2021. The Board will take formal action on agenda items. Mr. Mara, please.
Thank you. The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of the Board, of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. De Prima?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Ms. Lent? Mr. Solakowski?
Yeah.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Here.
A quorum exists.
If we can stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, everyone, for coming out to the reorganization meeting. And I will now hand it over to Mr. Mara.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. The one time a year that I assume the chair is at the organization meeting, and one of my first duties is to report the top free vote-getters in the November 3 election. Mr. Matthew Solakowski received 14,915 votes. Ms. Jill De Carroll received 11,793 votes. And Mr. Frank Weber received 11,403 votes. Congratulations to the elected officials and the reelected officials. At this point, the swearing-in of the members will commence. I will be swearing the members in according to the number of votes that they receive. So, Mr. Solakowski, I will swear you in first. And, Mr. Solakowski, do you have a copy of the oath in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so just fill in your name, fill in your name in the blanks, and my computer fails to hold on. So please raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible and commence with reading the oath of office, please.
I, Matthew Solakowski, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Matthew Solakowski, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to a law or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by the law, that I will faithfully and impartially justify and perform all the duties of this office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you and congratulations for being reelected to the Board for three years. Ms. Jill De Carroll, would you please commence with the oath of office, please?
Yes, sir. I, Jill De Carroll, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Jill De Carroll, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations and welcome back. Congratulations on the reelection and welcome back to the Board for three years. Mr. Weber, you're next. Please raise your right hand. And if you have a Bible, put your left hand on the Bible. And if not, I have one here, and we'll make--
I have a circa 1979 St. Mary's Catholic school in South Ambar.
Okay, please. Okay, so please commence to read the oath of office.
All right. I, Frank Weber, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Frank Weber, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to R.S. 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Weber, and welcome back to your new three-year term. Now, Joanne Torrey sent, gave each of you an official document that's required to be signed. Please sign that and either email it to me or drop it off to the office.
Will do.
Okay, so the newly constituted-- and then thank you to Ms. Lent for her three years of past service. So at this point, we'll do a roll call of the newly constant-- newly created Board. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Weber?
Here.
Here, we have a quorum. Next, before we go into the hearing of the residents, what I'd like to do is to just review the procedures that we will follow to elect both the President and the Vice President. I will take the role-- I will take the nominations for the President, and then the newly-elected President will take over for the Vice President. So the procedures are as follows. The Board of Education shall organize by electing one of its members as President and another as a Vice President. This election shall take place in the annual reorganization meeting pursuant to NJSA 18A:15-1. The procedures for the election of Board officers shall be as follows. Board President. At the annual, number one, at the annual reorganization meeting, the Board Secretary, serving as interim chair, will call for nominations for the Board President. Any member may place a member-- number two, any member may place a member's name in nomination. Three, a second is not required for the nomination of a candidate for President. Four, a member who shall-- who has been nominated may decline the nomination. Five, the Board Secretary and the Board Attorney shall record the names of all nominees for Board President. Six, when Board members have been given an opportunity to make nominations for Board President, the Board Secretary shall close the nomination. Seven, the Board Secretary shall then conduct a roll call vote on nominees in the order in which the nominee-- they were nominated. Nominees who have declined nomination shall not be included in the roll call. Eight, a Board member may only vote in support of one candidate. Number nine, the first candidate to receive votes from a simple majority of the Board members present will be elected to the office, and the Board President election process shall conclude with no further roll calls. Number 10, in the event of a tie between two or more nominees, a second runoff election shall be conducted between the candidates receiving the highest number of votes. And number 11, in the event of such a tie, the Board Secretary shall conduct the runoff election via roll call in which each Board member may only vote in favor of one of the remaining cabinets. The process for the Vice President is identical, only that I-- the newly-elected President will manage that process. Before we take nominations, what I would like to do is to open the floor to hearing of the residents. So if there are any residents out there that would like to make any comments before I take nominations, please do so now. Kelly, will you manage that for me, please?
Yeah. So again, the way-- if you want to make a public comment, if you're on Zoom, if you raise your hand-- raise the hand-- if you're on the phone, hit star nine. And just for clarification, Mr. Mara, this is on the agenda items. So any of the items that you just spoke to? Or anything that's on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
So this would be on any agenda item? Again, the hand raise icon or star nine if you're on the phone. And at this time, I do not stand when raising their hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. So at this point, under item number 11, nominations and voting, I will be accepting nominations for the President. Are there any nominations?
I would like to name Sal Giordano for President.
Are there any other nominations for President? Jill De Carroll?
I'd like Jill Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jill Kelly, I'm sorry.
I'd like to nominate Jill De Carroll for President.
Are there any other nominations for President? Okay, so the nominations for President are-- is closed. And the first candidate that was nominated by Mr. Solakowski was Mr. Sal Giordano. Ms. Burns, yes or no?
No.
Ms. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Carroll?
No.
Mr. De Prima?
Sorry, no.
Mr. De Prima?
No.
Mr. Dunn?
No.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
No.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
The votes for Mr. Giordano are three yeses and four nos. So he is not nominated. Six nos, I'm sorry, sorry. The second nomination is for Ms. Jill De Carroll. Again, yes or no? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Giordano?
No.
Mr. Solakowski?
No.
Mr. Weber?
No.
The yeses are six and the nos are three. Ms. Jill De Carroll is the new President of the Old Bridge Township Board of Education. Congratulations, and the floor is yours, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we need a motion for Vice President.
I would like to nominate Teresa Barnes for Vice President.
Mr. Solakowski nominated Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay. There are no more nominations, Mr. Mara, so I--
We'll do a roll call anyway, so the roll calls, yes or no? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Teresa Burns is the new Vice President of the Old Bridge Township Board of Education. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Okay, it's all yours, Mr. Carroll.
Okay, jump right in. Okay, we have-- the next item on the agenda is finance, so I need a motion to move finance numbers one through three.
Kelly will move.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
And Ms. Ellis Foster will second. Any discussion on finance items one, two-- one through three?
Yes, there is just one item-- actually, two items. On item number two, the halfway down of that list of bank accounts, the Old Bridge Township Board of Education project graduation account, please cross that out. That account was closed over the summer.
Okay.
And it further down at the bottom, under be it-- be it further resolved-- closer to the bottom, the Old Bridge Township project graduation account should be administratively removed. So that account was closed.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on items one through three?
And number three, Mr. Carroll, your name will be inserted there.
Yes, that's what I was gonna-- yeah, so does that-- when we get our minutes, does that show up on the minutes? Or, yeah, okay. Okay, seeing no other discussion, can I have a roll call, Mr. Mara?
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three pass.
Okay, so supplies, equipment, and services. We have just item one and two. Can I have a motion, please? For items one and two?
Kelly will move.
Teresa will second.
Okay, so that was Kelly move. Ms. Burns, second. Any discussion?
Yes, again, there were changes over the summer. In the second paragraph-- the whereas second paragraph, that 40,000 number should be 44,000. In the next paragraph-- the whereas paragraph, where it says currently 6,000, that should be 6,600. Then when we move down to the first resolved paragraph, 6,000 should be changed to 6,600. And the threshold where it's 40,000 should be 44,000. And in the next resolved-- in the last line, that 6,000 should be changed to 6,600. Those values were increased over the summer.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion on items one or two? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mara?
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one and two pass.
Okay, Board Secretary and Board Business. One-- just one and two, right? Those are sub-things, yep. One in-- items one and two, can I have a motion?
I will move it.
Ms. Ellis Foster.
Ms. Ellis Foster.
Who's second?
Second?
Okay.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, Ms.-- Mr. Carroll, each year, it is mandatory that the Code of Ethics be read at a Board-- at the reorganization meeting. And each of you has a document that has to acknowledge that this has taken place, and you've had the opportunity to ask the Board Council any questions about any of the provisions in the Code of Ethics. And typically, I read each item and ask any members to direct questions to Mr. Parton. So number one, move the Board to acknowledge receipt of the Code of Ethics by each school Board member. The reading thereof shall-- the reading thereof by the school business administrator or subsequent-- and subsequent discussion thereof. In accordance with NJSA 18A:12-24, period one, every Board member will abide by the following Code of Ethics. The Board member will, number one, uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Number two, make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or school standing. Number three, confine his or her Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Number four, carry out his or her responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with fellow Board members, ensure that they are well-run. Number five, recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the Board. Number six, refuse to surrender his or her independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Number seven, hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, he or she will provide accurate information and in concert with fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. Number eight, vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief school administrative officer. Number nine, support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. And number 10, refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and act on complaints at public Board meetings-- at public Board meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. So those are the 10 provisions of the Code of Ethics that each member-- each school member must abide by. If anyone would like me to repeat any of them, or if you have any questions about any of those individual items, I would suggest that you direct those questions to Mr. Parton, and he will provide you with any clarification that-- or definition that may be necessary.
Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Um, can we have a roll call then, Mr. Mara?
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski? Mr. Solakowski?
You're on mute.
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
The resolutions one and two. And a reminder, please, sign that acknowledgement document and get it over to my office via email, or if you'd like to drop it off, there's also-- thank you.
Okay, so now we are on to the hearing of the residents for any school district issue. So again, if you are on Zoom, just raise your hand. And if you can-- some people don't have their names. If you can just say your name, and then we will call on you. But just put your little hand up in the-- in the chat, in the-- yeah. Give a few minutes, or a few-- maybe a minute or two. Okay. Nobody? Oh.
Mr. Carroll, there's somebody in the chat.
So, yeah, there was a-- it says reopen our schools, but what I'd like to do is-- you know, I'd like to, you know, have a name, if that's possible, you know. I don't see-- they raised their hand in the box, but they kind of went away. So I don't know. Reopen schools, can you-- can you state your name? Okay. Um--
Mr. Carroll, they are there. If they unmute themselves, I believe they can talk now.
Okay. Reopen our schools, if you unmute yourself, you can speak. No? Are you able to unmute yourself? Okay, so it just looks like-- yeah, it just looks like in the chat, they want to know what the plan is to reopen the schools. Okay, your mute function isn't working. Okay, all right. So the question is, what is the plan to reopen the schools? So I guess I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Sidino.
Thank you. The task force met today and provided their input into a plan to reopen schools. We looked at the data, not only from the state locally, we looked at our impact within our schools right now. And we have not provided-- or we do not have a final decision on that yet. Some information has to go to the Board. But currently, we looked at that since Christmas-- well, since New Year-- But currently, we looked at that since Christmas, um, well, since New Year's, uh, we have nearly 500 new cases here in Old Bridge. Since Christmas, we have nine deaths in Old Bridge. Our numbers, today was a record high number of cases for COVID-19 in the state of New Jersey. It's our highest mark as of this far since COVID, the COVID pandemic. Our staff, our student, uh, numbers for actual students who are inflicted with COVID-19 right now is at its highest also. I believe we have 42 students currently with COVID-19 in the district and near, uh, over 20 staff members or at 20 staff members right now who have COVID. So those are all the things we took in consideration. We, uh, are looking at that information and we will provide information to the public as soon it is, as it available.
Okay, and we also have, uh, Mary. Um, if you unmute yourself, is she, can she unmute herself now, Ms. Ellis Foster? Mary, uh, Primiano, if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, um, hi everyone. So David, just to, um, come back to the reopening, um, we are a week out or two weeks to a, you know, the next phase. Um, I'm not sure, I know you said you have no information and, you know, your, your, your stats, um, that you just gave us, but how, how is, how are you making a decision so late in the game when schools are supposed to be, the next phase is supposed to be, um, in two weeks? So what are you waiting for, I guess, is my answer or my question? And, um, just like somebody said in the chat room, I forget her name, Gina Lynn. I completely agree with her, Old Bridge has been left behind compared to many districts in the area. We have neighboring districts within a few miles of us who have been back, especially kindergarten, kindergarten and elementary school who are at most risk to be at home. You're talking about almost, but in a few months, you're talking about 12 months of children being home and almost a whole entire school year of, of loss of learning. So I don't understand how we still don't have a decision with, within two weeks. So are, so are you just not making a decision and, 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 you know, to, to keep everyone quiet in the town that wants to return to school? And so that's my question, how, how are we, how are you able to make a decision whether they go back or not within a week or two? So you must have more data, uh, about where this is going for our district.
Like I provided you the information, we have just met, may, we finished at 6:30 this evening having a conversation and I received the feedback from multiple parents, multiple stakeholders from within the community, uh, multiple staff members within the community, uh, medical, uh, personnel within the community, and we are taking that information and it, you know, it's, COVID is a fluid situation. So when we left the, um, the decision in November to reassess it in January, you know, we, we would hope that the situation wouldn't be as bad it is in, in January, but looking at the information today, you know, I didn't have, we don't have a crystal ball in November 20th to say that on January 7th was going to be the highest day of COVID new cases in the state of New Jersey since March of last year, since the inception of COVID in the, in the, in the state, and that is very concerning. So that information has been provided to me, my task force, and that information is being digested and a plan, uh, will be going out to the public shortly.
Okay, um, so, all right, so the only other hand I see in the chat right now is reopen our schools and she, uh, he or she, I don't know, was having trouble unmuting herself or her, or himself. So did speak in the chat, so I am going to just, um, allow, if you can also state your name when, when I unmute you. Or actually, I can't, Kelly.
Um, they need to unmute themselves.
Oh, okay.
Can talk, yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm, I have to get used to this technology. You have to unmute yourself. If you can. No, you can't unmute yourself, oh, wait, there you go.
Can you hear me?
There you are.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So my name is Amelia and I guess, uh, same question, same concern regarding reopening the schools and, and we don't have a crystal ball, but we won't have a crystal ball a week from now, two weeks from now, three weeks from now, a few months from now. You know, so, uh, you said you had the meeting, um, and it just closed at 6:30. Can you share what was discussed in that meeting, what the overall consensus was? And I guess, again, just to understand how is a decision going to be made? Is there the possibility of, um, giving the parents options? You know, neighboring towns, um, didn't utilize all of their schools. They've, um, utilized maybe some of the buildings for, um, full in-person, um, learning. Other buildings are being utilized for hybrid and then there's the option to also be fully remote. You know, so where are we, are there, are we considering other options? And in terms of not having that crystal ball, like I said, we, we won't ever have that. So do we just keep prolonging it? You know, more tests are done, um, more available. It, the, the numbers may continue to go up. But it's just a different, from what it seems and what the data shows, it's just different than what it was in March and April in terms of symptoms and things of that nature. But regardless, I guess, what is the plan, huh? What was the consensus at the meeting that you had prior to this? Is there any other options where the, the, the parents can make that decision to send them if they want or be fully remote or hybrid?
So while you were all correct, we do not have a crystal ball as to, well, what the exact future will be in a week from now, two weeks from now, but we do know that the respiratory illness season will begin to diminish, uh, shortly. We're at the height of it right now, we're probably mid respiratory illness season where the, the flu and any airborne respiratory illness like COVID is at its highest point. We do believe that there will be a, um, some relief brought to us by the ability to have, uh, vaccine available to our, our staff and, um, our community relatively shortly, and that would help, uh, with the situation. But as far as, you know, there's always these, um, these comparisons, you know, we can make comparisons and we talked about in the task force today that there are neighboring communities, schools that haven't opened a day yet, that haven't been open one day for in-person learning, and there's several of them with, in the direct rare area of this community. So the comparisons are always there. I received an email from someone the other day saying, well, HomeDell's opening. Well, if you look at HomeDell's data, they're averaging eight cases a day. We're averaging 45 to 50 cases a day, uh, new cases in Old Bridge. So the comparisons aren't always relative to, you know, what the community's experiencing. And I don't know why Old Bridge is the community, is experiencing higher numbers than some of our neighbors around us. I don't, you know, I, that is why the Department of Health identified Old Bridge as a hotspot. And that's why this community and the great work of the township can partnering with us is providing testing on a regular basis because we are a hotspot and we do have higher cases than surrounding communities. I wish I can make that all go away, but I also don't have that authority to do that either. Just as many parents are concerned about, you know, opening the schools, I get, I get contacts from parents saying, please don't open the schools. And I know that everyone has their choice, but sometimes not everyone has their choice because the staff wouldn't have their choice and they, they have concerns too. So we take that all into consideration. The information from our meeting that just ended at 6:30, I have not had the ability to put it all down and provide it to the board and to other stakeholders who have the rights to have that information prior to the information going public. And when we have the information, um, all put together, we will put it out to the public as soon as possible.
Okay. Um. Next person up is Lisa. I'm gonna have Ms. Ellis Foster, you just have to now unmute yourself, Lisa.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, hi, so I have, um, two questions. One is about the reentry task force. Can you tell us how many parents are on that task force? Because, um, from what I've heard, there's not too many compared to other members on that force and that there have been, or at least one parent that has voiced their opinion that goes against the rest of the task force, um, opinions. And it just seems like it's, there's not really a fair representation from parents. It seems like parents are the minority on there and can we get more, more parents on there? Because our children need a voice as well. The teachers have the teachers' union for their voice and we need a voice for our children.
Um, I, I believe there are, the, that today's meeting, there are seven parents on that meeting.
And what is, what comprises the rest of the board or the task force, I'm sorry?
We have peop, people who are our medical referral people in the, in the community. We have people from our, um, Aramark, which provides our custodial services to ensure they can, um, clean our facilities. We do have educators, administrators, board members on that, uh, committee.
Okay, and how many overall people are there on the committee?
I'd have, um, at times 25, um, anywhere, anywhere between 20 and 25, depending on if they're all available.
Okay, and then my second question was regarding the survey that was sent out. Question number nine, um, which was asking about different, um, options for returning to school. The way it was set up was a little odd. They, it started with grade level K to five and gave two options for K to five. And then the third option for K to five was buried at the bottom of the, the responses. It seemed like the four-day option was offered at the end so that possibly people would miss it when they're looking for it or, or when they were looking at the question. Um, and it wasn't even, um, visible until you scrolled down. So was that, what was the intention there? Why wasn't it listed right after the other K to five options?
I don't, I'm not sure how it was, I, I didn't see that, uh, concern. I'd have to look, I don't have it in front of me, but.
Okay, just because.
I don't think it was done intentionally.
Okay, because, um, you may want to like send out something clarifying that or in the future just maybe check it because the talk in social media is that it was done intentionally. Like people, people are getting very suspect of everything just based on what's been done so far. And it's just, every, everything like that just makes us more suspect as to the intentions of, of this, the district. That's just my opinion, it's not just my opinion, but, um, thank you for your response, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, okay, next up is Elena. Elena, if you can unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I too have a question. Um, my name is Elena Francisco and I am the PTA president at Charah. So, um, I have to be very honest, I usually try to, um, just do a little more listening, um, just to, you know, kind of see where everybody's coming from and understand that there are many, many different opinions and logistics that go into the, the decisions that are made for our students. But I too, like those who have spoken, am concerned about my children and all of our students in the community. I don't like the changes that I'm seeing in them emotionally, um, and I know that I'm not alone in that. So I want to ask right now, what were the results of the survey that was sent out? Do we have numbers on how parents responded to that survey?
Um, yes, we, we do have information. We're gonna probably put that out to the, the public, uh, over the weekend. I don't have it all and, you know, there's a lot of questions. But I don't have them all in front of me right now. Like if you asked me a particular, you know, the, the interesting thing about, and you'll see when we print it out, the, the township is basically split down the middle with almost every decision we make in reference to, um, the pandemic. And so it's basically without odd, odd numbers and 50% want, it's the, some portion of the students to come back at some, uh, some point, 50% want it to remain remote.
Yeah, I guess the question that I was most curious about was the question that was just, um, brought up by the last person, um, to see how many parents, you know, really want to get their kids back into school and which option they chose. That's really my only question, um, just doing a lot of listening at the moment.
You know, it's very, it's, again, like I said, you know, I don't think there's anyone, especially in the education corner there from our team, that's like not advocating for trying to get students back as soon as possible. When this first happened in the March of 2020, um, you know, I say this all the time, we were directed to close down with one particular, um, suspected case within our community. And I know things change and I know that people's tolerance and expectations to this pandemic change. And now that we're experiencing, you know, yesterday, I think today's 59 cases, the other day, 77 cases in the, in the town, the township. We have, uh, 42 students actively with it, uh, 20 staff members actively with it that people are, you know, the tolerance for is changing, hey, let's, please, then send them back. And when we do send back 40 into a classroom, if you have, you know, again, that are all going to come back in, but a good portion of those 42 students are in school with COVID, even a portion of them. The CDC and the New Jersey Department of Health guidelines have increased since we've become a high, high-risk area in, in this area of New Jersey. So now mask-wearing doesn't count as part of the social distancing in which you get to determine whether someone, um, has to then quarantine or not. So we used to be able to say that, okay, you walk, you were in the room with the someone who was positive, but you wore a mask, so that's not relative anymore. They say because we are a high-risk area, even wearing a mask, you still have to quarantine. So that would, uh, at times possibly double the number of people we would have in quarantine. The problem we have is when we have such a high level and we are in a high-risk area that it increases the number of staff that we quarantine. And that the thing we don't want to do is invite our students back because we want them back and then have to send them home again because we can't keep up with the staffing be, because of the quarantine that happens when you have, like I said, 20 staff members positive and 42 students positive. That number, when you come in contact with, with three, four, six people, 10 people during the course of day, that's 10 more staff members that I have to send home. And we do not want to do that to the public again where we bring our students in and then we send them home three weeks, four weeks later because of the, the staffing. We want to make sure that not only is everyone safe, not only, I mean, the, I, I, the, the Code of Ethics for the board, I, they just read when the number nine was to ensure the safety of our student, of our staff, to make sure our staff, was it number nine, Mr. Parton, what is, uh, or Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, um, number nine is, support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duty.
So to pu, support and protect, we have a duty and responsibility to support and protect not only our staff, but, um, our students, but our staff as well. And, you know, with our board members, many of them are here that are sitting on the task force, they have, they hear the parents crying that they want their kids back in school, but they also hear and feel the concerns, that distress that everyone's feeling because of COVID. One of the thing, items that just came out is that, you know, the variant strain that's more contagious is now in the tri-state area. It's in Pennsylvania, it's in New York. How much time do you think before that's here in Middlesex County? These are all things we take into consideration, I'm sorry to ramble on. I, I want to be as transparent as possible, but I do want to provide, um, the board with as much information as possible and all stakeholders, I mean, administrative team, my principals, my, you know, before the information comes to the public.
Thank you, and, and I do appreciate all of that information and understand all of it and can see all different perspectives and sides. I guess, um, in listening to you, I, I've kind of come up with another question. So has anything been discussed about possibly, um, allowing just elementary to get back and sort of handling it slowly with the, with the little ones? And, and I get it because if you're a parent of an older one, you, you want the same thing. But we know that our little ones are struggling so much academically and emotionally. And also on top of that, I also wondered, um, especially back in November when we, when we closed again, is it possible to close one school at a time instead of closing the entire district when you don't have enough staff to cover a building? Is that something that's discussed as well?
Well, that, that's an interesting dynamic and too, and since something that hasn't, you know, and I, I went over this with Mr. Parton when we had that decision in November, that right now, the Department of Health guidance force New Jersey schools, and it's not much different than we've seen in the United States federal level where there's different messages coming from the administration and different information coming from the CDC. So the Department of Health. So the Department of Health is telling us that when we're in the high risk area, we should be considering remote education only for our schools to keep our schools as safe as possible. It doesn't say just in the classrooms that, or the schools that have a lower instances of outbreak or have lower, have lower numbers. It says, consider remote education for all, uh, all schools. So then the question was, what is the liability for the district when that happens? So on, on the worst case scenario, we, we ignore that. We ignore Department of Health guidance and certain districts will do it. You know, some, certain districts have done it, but the Department of Health is right now is recommending that schools should be in a remote only setting. So if a staff member, if a student becomes seriously ill or worse, the liability is going to be with the, this board and the question's going to be by the, by that, the attorney hired by that, that family of that sick child or that sick staff member or worse. You had Department of Health guidance recommending that you shouldn't have people in your schools and you did so. Did you see the document, Mr. Sedidino? The, did the board see the document? And why did you have the schools open anyway? That's the first place they're going to go with the liability issue. And that's something we have, we've considered as well. So to answer the question as to why we don't pick and choose what schools we open and which ones we, we close, we do that when we follow the Department of Health guidance, when we have an outbreak in the school. But when the decision was made based upon a Department of Health guidance that we reached a high level zone, that it was all schools within the, within the district.
I understand. Thank you for answering that.
Okay. Thank you, Elena. Um, okay, so.
Mr. Supreme has a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Someone just said that, uh, the chat is disabled on Zoom. I don't know. They can't comment. I don't know what that means or how to fix it.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, so.
Somebody just contacted me that the chat is disabled on Zoom.
Yes, we'd like everyone, if they want to speak, we'd like them to, um, be on the Zoom call. They can either call in, um, or be on the Zoom to, um, that's the way we've been doing it in the past. Yeah, if you can just, you know, we'd like to, you know, have a conversation, you know, have the, the person actually call and speak like we do in normal meetings.
Okay.
Okay. Um, all right, so, um, next up is Terry.
Hello, buddy. Hi. Um, my name is Terry Bonomo, um, and, um, I'm going to vocally say I am on the remote task force. I have been. And, um, regardless of what people in this community think, no one knows, and I'm going to get emotional, no one knows the amount of hours, the amount of arguments, the amount of tears, the amount of stress that has gone into this. No one in this community understands that. No one, except for those of us who have sat on it. And I just want to say thank you to the administration for listening to everybody that does call in. But I don't think what people are understanding is the vast discrepancy in this community. We are completely divided. This is a divided community and it, it, it kills me because I love Old Bridge. I love the schools. I love the administration. I love everything about it. But people are not doing what they need to do outside of schools. So it is very difficult for the task force to sit there and say, well, this is what we're going to do. This is what we're going to do. This is what we're going to do. Regardless of your political affiliation, regardless of what is going on, people need to start understanding that schools are a safe place and they need to be, they need to remain as such. And the decisions that we make as a task force go on. I mean, I can't even tell you the time I've spent away from my son, the time that, you know, I see Mr. Sedidino with tears in his eyes, everybody, everybody. And it's easy, it is very, very easy to criticize the decisions that we make. But you don't see the, uh, overall picture. We may not have staff to staff the buildings. We may not have the resources available. And we are trying to be as transparent as possible. We have been, I, I, I can't even say the communication in this district has been amazing. I just wish people would give us a break because I know it's hard. I have a child myself. He is dyslexic. He is working by himself. And I cry every day because I'm an educator myself. I'm on the computer every day. I just wish people would give us a break because we are all doing the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Um, okay, so the next person we have is Bee. You can unmute yourself. There you go.
Hi, hi. I can appreciate it, um, that what just was what that woman just explained and thank you for that. And I honestly, I, I can totally appreciate that as a parent, um, if I were in the room, I can imagine, you know, having the same level of emotion that Mr. Sedidino and, and she had both had. But has anyone thought about, I don't know, uh, getting help from people that actually, or, or sought out anyone that, obviously this is an anomaly event and these things, what, what, every hundred years? But at this point, because things are not changing as quickly as they should and our children are really going dramatically in the wrong direction, sought the help of people who can do BCP planning to, you know, contingency planning, other than this, just this remote. Because obviously like I, I think you all want the best for our children, right? You, you have the responsibility to protect our children, you said, but you also have the responsibility to educate our children. And I understand, I have, I have family members who are educators in, in New York City schools. So I, I can totally appreciate both sides of this, you know, this, this debate. But just trying to get like when, when you don't call a plumber, if you, if you're, you lock somebody a house, right? So I can appreciate that you're all educators and you have some level of, of, of planning and, and trying to work with budgets. But this is not something that maybe just, it should be left to just parents and, uh, and, you know, the board. Maybe we should get some outside help that could, it, it be, be more objective and, and use the data that we have objectively instead of like, you know, getting the emotions involved and, and like not, not letting this go in the direction that maybe it could go if it wasn't blocked by emotions and debates. Um, has anyone thought of, you know, looking for help like that?
I, I don't, um, I, I will say that I, as a superintendent, I sit on committees throughout the state um, with just that kind of, uh, supports that you recommend. Um, I, I have had meetings with Rutgers professors, um, uh, people from the medical, the medical staff at UNDNJ. You know, local universities, um, we get experts to come in all the time to assist us and give us thoughts and ideas on how to best deal with the situation. Um, and even the, you know, talking about the Department of Health. Uh, a phone, I know our, our nursing coordinator is on the phone with them on a regular basis. Everyone across this nation, across the, the state is stretching it and strapped with the amount of resources that are available to find more resources. And if you, if you have some good ideas for other ones, you can email them to me and I will track down all of them that are available. Um, we're welcoming any kind of resources that we can get to, to deal with this situation. Um, and it's, you know, it's not pretty, the, 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 what we've had to deal with, but you know, willing to take in any resources we can get. So thank you for that. And if you send it to me, uh, we'll track down more, but you know, we are working with everyone and anyone we can who's an expert in the situation. Um, but again, there's not that many people who are experts in pandemics. Um, because like someone else said, this one's every hundred year pandemic, hopefully.
Right. Okay. Okay. Um, thank you, Bee. Um, all right, so we have reopen, there's no other, uh, no other hands raised. I do see reopen has their hand raised again, seeing that there is no one, nope, there you go. Okay. So, um, is there anyone else that has anything, uh, to say in hearing of the residents? Okay. Okay, reopen. If you can unmute yourself.
Sorry, I actually do, before we go and it closes out, I guess, can you just tell us next steps? I know you said in the beginning you were going to be, um, discussing it and, um, as a committee and a task force. But can we get a date? Can we get something to let us know? A date to look forward to, just to get more information. Uh, we understand it's a hard decision to make, of course. Um, but it's, it's hard on either way that you look at it, um, for feeling like the kids are just regressing. Um, it's a hard situation all around. I think everyone could appreciate that. Um, but just a, a date, let us know what we can, when we can expect to, to understand how we're going to move forward. It's not just the parents. I mean, I, I could speak for me and my kids and other family members that I have in the district. The kids are asking, you know, the kids want to know, when, when are we going back? When are we going back? When are we going back? Um, not every child fully grasps what's going on, especially, um, when they see others going to school. So I guess the question is, when can we get a date? Can we get a date as to when a decision is going to be made?
Like I, I said earlier, I, I promise you it will be within the next three days. I just finished our conference at 6:30. I haven't had a chance to speak to our administrative teams, our, our, who run our schools. I don't want the, you know, the parents and the, the, like you said, the children at home to find out first before we have a chance to them. The board members who are on here haven't, haven't been briefed on, uh, what was discussed. So as soon as that takes plan, a, a, can, a concise, but yet accurate, um, plan that depicts everything is laid out, it will be put out to the public.
Okay. Okay, um, all right, we have one more hand raised in, and, uh, yep, there you go. Um, Mary? Unmute yourself.
Hi, this is, this is Mary again. Thanks for listening again. While I appreciate all what David was saying, um, we need to try our best. And like many other parents, this is our children, this is their education and this is their emotional health. And we have to take that as number one priority as well as their safety. It is proven that the schools are not where this virus is being transmitted. If New York City could get 190,000 elementary school children back into schools with a, a very high rate, transmission rate, we can do, make it happen for the sake of every child and every child's education and more importantly, their wellbeing and emotional health. It is at the most important thing. There are children suffering. We need to make this happen. I don't want to hear the statistics. I don't want to hear all of that. We have a, a town that the cases are outside of the schools. We have Catholic, two Catholic schools that are open. There's many Catholic schools and private schools that are doing what we need to do to keep the children safe. We need to do it. So please, I'm begging you to get our, especially our elementary children back into some sort of in-person learning. It, this remote learning is failing. It is not helpful and it's not working. And this cannot go on. We don't have a crystal ball. We could be two years into this. Get to work like many other districts have and brought back students, please. I understand it's not easy, but please, please do this.
Thank you, Mary. Um, okay, next person is Lynn. If you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, this is Lynette Rios. Um, I have three, um, sons in the district. One is in Salk, the other two, one carpenter. Basically, my question is this, um, will the staff be asked to get vaccinated in order to make this decision, I guess, an easier one for the students to come back?
I will, I will begin by answering the question, but then I'll, I'll again turn it over to, to Mr. Parton. I know there was some talk in legislation, um, about this recently, but, um, at this point, you know, and I, I, I believe majority of the staff want to get vaccinated. Um, and I'm doing everything I can and working with the OEM. I, I speak to them, um, almost daily, begging them to get testing right here in Old Bridge. I said, take the high school, I'll give you a whole gymnasium, let's start testing, um, let's start vaccinating right here. We can do testing on one end of the building and vaccinations on the other end. Um, and I, I think that everyone, the majority would do that. But as far as mandating vaccinations for staff and students, um, it's not there yet. Mr. Parton?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Mr. Sedidino. Uh, to, to the member of the public's question, will, will we ask for staff members to do that? I think the answer is yes. The Department of Health and the CDC are recommending that. It is a non-stop news cycle and it is, uh, identified as a best practice. So they'll be asked, but we do not have the authority to mandate it at this point. That may change. As of right now, uh, we're not going to mandate something that we don't have the legal authority to mandate. So again, it's a fluid situation, but as of right now, it's going to be a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Um, Catherine? Just unmute yourself. Okay.
Hi, yeah, this is Catherine's husband, Tim. Uh, just wanted to chime in on, on a couple of things. Thanks for your time. Um, first thing would be about, you know, litigation and legality. Um, the, I'm kind of torn with what I hear of being in the best interest of students learning uh, and staff and what's best for everybody's health and wellbeing. While it seems like we're more concerned with legality here. And wondering, and, and maybe someone could address this in a minute, but you know, would a waiver of some type or knowing that the, the district explit, would it be possible to have those who are for in-person be able to have that option? And those who aren't have the ability to stay home and, and get remote learning that way?
Well, that's, that was just like it was in, in the, uh, Tim, like it was in the, in the fall when we reopened, you know? So parents were, and they would still be given that option. Some parents, uh, would have the option to tend to send their, to keep their students home and some would, um, opt for the hybrid model. Um, we're looking at hybrid models right now that bring students into school more often, um, for when we do invite them back. So, and some students would have the option, um, to, parents would have the option to keep their students home as long as the, um, the health emergency is still in place. Cause that falls under the executive order by the governor of New Jersey that allowing us to provide remote instruction for, um, our students. When, once that executive order disappears and there's no longer a health crisis, then students would have to be in-person to receive their instruction.
And how, how are other districts in the same region of central New Jersey, which is deemed high risk, right? How are some of them still in-person learning? Is it Old Bridge? I mean, you know, I don't want to make anything snarky, right? But it's, it, I mean, are other eternities and other school districts not concerned with legalities and more concerned with getting kids in school or what can be done as opposed to what can't be done?
Do you want to adjust that, Mr. Parton, or?
Sure. Uh, it's, it's a balancing act. Um, it, it is a question of the risk level. It is a question of the recommendations from the state and federal authorities. Uh, it is a very unpopular and questionable practice to, to go with the waiver issue. Mr. Bach, what you were talking about is something that has been considered in a lot of districts. unpopular and questionable practice to, to go with the waiver issue, Mr. Bach. What you were talking about is something that has been considered in a lot of districts all the way back the fourth week of March, where there was a, actually a emergent litigation where there was waiver requirements for classified students to receive education. Perhaps not surprisingly, that was ground on by the courts. And to have a waiver as a condition of what is a constitutional right isn't going to work out. I don't think it's a question of whether districts are being overly fearful or not. I think it's a question of what guidance districts are receiving from the external experts, such as the Department of Health. And right now, with the vaccine on the horizon, I think that a lot of state agencies are recommending that you wait. And districts are always going to have different interpretations of that from each other. But Mr. Sidedino has accurately said what the county and the state have been telling the district.
You know, I, I understand that was a very legal response, but what, what, what I'm looking for is on, you know, and I haven't sat in on other districts calls like this, but it just, it's hard for me to comprehend that districts in such close proximity can be handling things in such different manners when using the same statewide recommendations and same Department of Health recommendations. So ultimately, you know, to chime in and, and piggyback off, off some other folks. It does, it seems hard for me to think that the goal is back in school when it seems like the goal is to not be back in school. What, what justifies us not going back? As opposed to what creative options can we explore to get kids back, especially the most vulnerable, the youngest? And those who, who need, need to be back in school, not want, but need to be back in school.
I will just say that, like, like I said to numerous callers before, that the, the task force, which is made up of multiple people from many different backgrounds, looks at the information and weighs all that information and then decides, you know, or makes a recommendation based upon what the risks, what the risks are. And again, the administrative team, the educational team is trying, looking at every avenue, whether it be, whether it be based upon, like you said, the, the needs of students who are at the greatest risk, getting them back earlier. And having that available. And we, we do so not with just, you know, a, a mandate or decision, but we do, we do so through consensus. Because that's the way we have done this since the beginning of this task force, when it was formed. And, you know, I, I look at other townships' task forms, task forces, and it's made up of six people. I don't know of any, you know, around the area that has such, such parent involvement and as much involvement as our, our task force does. But again, I, we are all sympathetic to what you're saying. And we're working as hard as we can to provide an in-person date as soon as we can, in light of the pandemic being at its highest numbers right now than it's ever been before. Today was a record high day for people to pandemic, pandemic, a record high number of deaths in New Jersey related to the pandemic. And while everyone says, you know, there's no, there's lower risk for, for students in schools. They don't seem to, they seem to be asymptomatic. But they are, they also have the ability to spread it to people within their families. I have a personal experience with that going on in my neighborhood right now. Where a young person brought it home from a recreation type program. And now the whole family has it, including the mother and father who are, who are out of work. And, you know, it's, it's tough. These are, these are all tough decisions because they play on everyone within the family. It's not just something related right in the school, but it, it goes, it grows through the pandemic onto the families and to everyone else.
Yep, I, I would agree with that. And, and, and I think it was smart that you did actually close the schools from, you know, over the holidays, because I, I think some people probably did have larger gatherings and exposure, numbers have gone up. But on that point, I, I think I saw some data around the holidays showing that after schools were already closed, that, that not only, you know, some student numbers could have, you know, actually went down, I believe. And, and some teacher numbers went up. So I just want to make sure that, you know, and again, I think after these holidays, these numbers should have spiked. I think there's much, much more increased testing as well as of late than opposed to March, when, when testing wasn't as, as prevalent. So I think hopefully all of the data is being looked at. As you mentioned, a consensus for a decision. And I'm looking forward to see what the data looks like for these surveys to, to make sure that the decisions that are made are done with, with, by, by the people, right? Or, or by the parents and teachers and, and staff. Thank you. That's, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, if someone, husband? If you can unmute yourself and just state your name, please.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to be referred to as a husband to an educator. First off, I'd like to say thank you to David Sidedino. I think he's done a, a great job managing this unprecedented situation that's occurred with this pandemic. It's a difficult position to be in. And I can only imagine how, how to manage this. So a lot of people forget that this is a once in a lifetime situation. Furthermore, I'd just like to just, just really make a point, not make a comment, not really a question to anyone. Often gets overlooked that teachers are also humans too. My wife in particular works excess hours beyond the school day, making sure her kids are taken care of virtually. And some of the social media that has been displayed recently has been very insulting to the teachers, to their families. It's just not okay. You know, teachers are spouses, teachers are parents, just like the parents who want to go back to school. School is important. Education is a foundation of, of everything. It's the most important thing. I'm, I would never not say that. You know, we have parents who are gathering twenty, thirty, forty, fifty people without masks, not social distancing. And they have the audacity to go on social media and complain about not going to school when they're not following the guidelines. And they could easily put a teacher at risk, their family at risk, two-year-olds, three-year-olds, four-year-olds, any children at risk. I think parents really need to take a step back and realize what they're saying. Because these teachers are working their butts off in a situation that no one ever in their lifetime would be expected to partake in. This is unprecedented. And let's just be grateful for our health and continue to get through this together. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, okay, so, um, I don't see any new, any new hands raised. B, I do see your hand raised, and I did, I did allow other people, two other people to speak twice. So I am going to allow it this time. In the future, we're going to allow, you know, one person to speak, speak one time, get all your thoughts out and, but I will allow it this time. And please know, from now on, only one time you're going to speak, okay? So if you just unmute yourself, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, I actually, I, 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 next time I will write my questions down. I actually, I didn't really, it's hard to prepare when you're actually hearing others speak and you have other questions in addition to that. So this really is coming as, you know, to Tim's point, which, and I can appreciate the husband who, his wife is a teacher and educator. I can appreciate exactly what he's saying. But we do see other districts going in close proximity, you know, to the township, going back. We have schools in the, in Old Bridge that are back. My neighbor's kids are in Catholic school every day they go. So I'm just really more offering solutions and I'd be more than happy to, I, I'd like to actually, you know, know, like full, with full transparency. If you can let everyone know who is actually on constantly being part of this task force. And if there are additional people that could join the task force and perhaps maybe for full transparency, so people fully understand what's actually transpiring during those. You can stream them so people understand the discussions that are being had. I, I can appreciate that, like you guys did send out a survey. Unfortunately, you didn't come prepared to the meeting to speak about the stats that were actually raised during that survey. So that would also add to full transparency so that we could speak to numbers just the way you guys do when you have your task force meetings. It's more, it's more just offering solutions. And I think if there are parents that would be willing to offer solutions and that would, could join the task force, I, I would be happy to see like, you know, like a link that says we're looking for more people aside from also looking outside. As Mr. Sidedino said, to educators across the state and, um, you know, the, the Board of Health and everyone else that's involved in, in the decision-making. So it was just, it's, it's more to really fully be transparent. I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, okay. Thank you, B. Um. I am not seeing any other hands raised. So at this point, I am going to close the hearing of the residents portion. And we will move on to old business. Is that, am I doing that right?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the Carol Point of Order. Joe, did we, did we miss vote, or did I miss it? Did we miss voting on the calendar?
Yeah, that was part of Board Secretary and Board Business, Mr. Weber.
Okay, I know it's, all right. That's good. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So old business. Is there any old business? No. Is there any new business?
Well, first of all, welcome back. I'm excited to start the new year with this new board. I welcomed Frank Weber to the board and I look forward to looking for, working with all of you. And I hope 2021 is the year that we, the people finally regain the power to decide what we want to do with our lives and our liberties instead of the elites and bureaucrats that we've conditioned ourselves to allow to run our lives for almost a year now. And I do believe that the parents should have the choice whether to go back to school or not and hear everyone's opinion. And lastly, I'd like to thank Ms. Lent for her service and making my first year as a board member very enjoyable and very enlightening. And I wish her good luck on her path going forward. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Dunn.
So I just want to thank your predecessor, Kelly Ellis Forster, for a remarkable year as the Board spokesman, President, Leader. Everything you want to put into a package, I think she did a, a wonderful, unbelievable job based upon the unprecedented circumstances we were confronted with. I've known Kelly for a very long time and I have to say unequivocally, I'm very proud of her. I know that she did a lot of work behind the scenes that a lot of us know about, but the public doesn't. And, you know, I'm grateful that, you know, she was the right person at the right time to assist David Sidedino with, you know, our response to this pandemic. It's unprecedented, like everyone's been saying. And, you know, it's very difficult for us as board members to watch, you know, the system basically shut down and go virtual. And, you know, there's many board members who advocated to get the kids back in school. And it's, it's, it's a debate that could run on for hours and days and you're going to have different opinions. But ultimately, the decision is safety. It's about making sure our kids and families and staff are healthy and, and safe. I can tell you by being the fire chief here in Old Bridge, I see the numbers at the county level and they're not good for Middlesex County. You know, with that said, you know, I advocated, you know, very strongly to get kids back in school, especially elementary. Those are the students who don't have the abilities to really, you know, learn virtually because they need to have a guardian or a parent next to them to make sure they're staying focused and staying online and staying on task. And I agree that we need to do that. That's important. But at this moment in time, it's very difficult with what's going on out there, especially here in Old Bridge. And our, our first goal is to, to make sure everyone's safe. And we're going to continue that. But the debate is there and, and we will continue working with the administration as a board to find ways of getting kids back in school because ultimately that is our focus and, and job. With that said, again, Kelly, thank you for a remarkable year as president. I really appreciate what you did and I'm sure the other seven board members or eight board members appreciate you as well for what you did. Secondly, I want to welcome back Frank Weber. Frank's a friend. Frank and I, you know, have, you know, had, you know, our times together in, in, in past years. And Frank brings a new dimension back to the board. You know, Frank has a lot of knowledge and history. And we don't always agree. I'll, I'll be the first person to say that. But, you know, Frank has always been a positive resource and been, you know, very helpful in, in, in his knowledge of, of, of what has occurred. And his, his abilities as a leader in the town is, is also a very helpful thing for us as, as a board. Congratulations, Madam President, for being elected. Your, 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 your position, it's, it's very well welcomed. And also, Teresa, congratulations for being Vice President. And I'm looking for a, a, a refreshing year. And I think the, the task at hand now is to get, you know, kids back in school. And we'll work, of course, with Dave and, and the administration and this, the task force to find ways of, of doing it. But I can tell you, based upon what I see as, as, as one of the fire chiefs here in town, the information is not good at this point. I know that the first responders are in the process of being vaccinated right now. I know that many of my peers have been vaccinated. I'm slated to get vaccinated tomorrow. And I'm hoping that one be, which is part of the process where educators and, 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 and staff of, of schools get vaccinated. I'm hearing that's probably going to be sometime in late January. So, you know, we're getting close to the end and I'm going to appeal to the public, bear with us. Many of us on the board want our kids back in school. I can say everyone wants the kids back in school. It's just not you. And we need to do it safely and correctly. And the light is at the end of the tunnel. And we're going to continue working very diligently to find that way. So thank you. And again, congratulations, Madam President, Madam Vice President, and welcome Frank. Congratulations. Matt, and, and of course you again, Jill, for being reelected. And Lisa Lent was a very important part of the board. She brought a great perspective as being a business mind, a human resource professional, and she will be dearly missed. But again, thank you, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Thanks, Rich. Um, would anyone else, anyone else like to speak or have any old business or? Anything?
I have a, I actually have a question and a thought. So it was mentioned by somebody, I think it was B, asking if we could stream the meetings. Is that something that we can, are we allowed to do that?
Stream the re-entry meetings?
Yeah, yeah, or stream any kind of climate meetings that we hold.
You're allowed to do it. The question is what subject matter is being entertained and does it make sense? And would it be in a digestible format? Because not everybody in a group would be necessarily talking into microphones in a user-friendly manner, but that's really up to Mr. Sidedino.
I wasn't sure if we had to abide by any open meeting act or anything like that, if, if we did decide to do that. Then my
That would not be
Sorry, what?
That would, the Open Public Meetings Act would not be applicable. That would, the Open Public Meetings Act would not be applicable to those meetings.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my other thought was, somebody had mentioned um, anxiety, not knowing when schools are going to reopen. And it can be a little, I'm in an uncertain situation that I get a little bit, you know, anxious. So is there a way that we could let people know of markers maybe that we would be looking at to see if we're going to reenter? So let's say maybe, I, I'm not, I'm just spitballing here, consecutive day of maybe 1% or 2% decrease in cases, is that something that the public could know that, you know, alright, we're, we're trending in the right direction? Or um, or if we get something from the Health Department saying uh, that we can reopen, are, are there markers that we can give to the public to let them know that we're on track with? That's a question, question for Mr. Sittadino.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you cut yourself off of the app, but I think I got most of it. Um, yes, and that's, you know, when we, even as we stated the date of the night, the 19th, um, it was clear that, you know, we would have to look at the indicators at the time, look at the data at the time. Um, I don't think anybody would say, well, it's best to come back while the data's trending up. And it's definitely trending up right now. Um, and that may be just a reflection of, you know, the holidays that we just experienced and gatherings for New Years as we thought it would be. And that's why the 19th was a date that was chosen because it would fall with outside the 14 days beyond the um, the, 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 the time when most people will be having, attend, approaching large gatherings. So, you know, we want to look at those trends and see when they're trending in a downward direction and present dates to the public as to when we're looking to come back. So hard dates so they know about it and be ready for it.
Hey, do you think that there would be other markers so that we could um, let them know?
Such as?
Um, let's see. I guess besides overall cases, there's, I, I don't know. I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but.
Well, right now, we're a, a little over a 10% positivity rate. That means that um, of the, I believe, the five, 52,000 tests that were conducted yesterday in St. New Jersey, over 5,000, um, or 6,000 persons um, were positive out, out of those tests. So those are, you, you want to have a lower positivity rate. And I know people talk about, well, you're testing more, so you're going to have more results. But trending also with that data is that the number of uh, hospitalizations, and, and you know this more just as much as anyone, as your, your husband works in um, this field, the number of hospitalizations, the number of ICUs, the number of deaths have also gone up. So just because you're testing more and you're, you're, yes, that would indicate that you're getting more tests, but just because you're testing more doesn't mean that the number of hospitalizations, the number of deaths would go up too with it as you're discovering the more cases. So those are all things we look at as well because they're telling us to, they talk to us as to, as to the, not only the community spread, but is the community spread related to just testing? Or is it, or is, are the high number of testings results because of the, of testing? Or is it related to um, the community spread, which we also get, like I said, get the indications from the number of hospitalizations, the number of people in ICU, the number of people on ventilators, and uh, the number of deaths, which have also gone up in accordance and similar to the number of cases.
Right, so we've been looking at all this data, but I don't think we've articulated it to the public saying we're going to monitor this. If it goes down for X consecutive days by X amount of percent, we'll be on track to reopen. And you just explained it very well why we're closed, so I'm just that.
Well, I would say a, a, a clear indicator would be if this, you know, and I would love for this to happen with the next week or two, um, if the Department of Health lowered us to a moderate rate. That would be a great indicator.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
Because then it, then it eliminates the liability that we talked about before. Because right now, they're telling us that we should consider remote um, education. So if it's in a moderate rate, they, they relieve that um, stipulation.
Okay, so um, maybe we could just find a way to, I, I hate to say it, um, the district website, I don't know if we could or.
I, we're just, or just. I could put, I could put the daily, I, we, I think we have a resource there for it, but I can definitely put the daily rating on there and say that we're looking for, towards a moderate rate.
Okay, I, I, I hate to burden you with more stuff, but I'm, I'm hoping that'll help. Alright, thank you much.
Thank you much.
Anybody else want to speak? Anybody? Frank, it looks like, Frank, you're muted. I see, I see your lips moving. There you, well, no.
I'm unmuted now.
There you go.
A lot of people wish to have that tool, I understand that. But in any event, um, I just want to say that uh, I'm thankful for the uh, people who've supported me and I'm glad to be back on the board. Uh, the focus, I think now, the, the greatest focus for all of us is to do the best we can to get our kids back in the buildings as many as we can while at the same time not compromising health to the staff. Now, that's, it's an easy thing to say, it's much tougher to do. But uh, I will help and work all I can to see if that goes forward.
Okay. Thanks, Frank. Um, Kelly?
Yes, thank you. Uh, hello, thank you. It's, it's nice to be on this side.
I know.
Um, first, Rich, thank you very much. I appreciate those words. I lost, I'm trying to look at my notes. I want to also thank Lisa. Uh, yeah, I did touch base with her today. Um, she was a great asset. Uh, we will miss her. Hopefully, as we said before, when uh, we get through all this, we'll get together and, and have a little celebration. Um, I do want to thank all the parents calling in. You are doing what you should be doing, is advocating for your children. And what I, I would like to say is, there is not one person in this district, whether it's a teacher, administrator, custodian, nurse, uh, anyone on this board who does not want our children back in school. That's why we're all here. Um, so I was disheartened to, that somebody made a comment, I, I didn't catch the name, I apologize, that thinking that someone's goal, that our goal is not to get our children back. That is just blatantly false. There is not, I, I can tell you, everyone wants them back. This is making everyone's life difficult. Our children, we know, we know how difficult it is on our children. It is difficult on our parents. It is difficult on our teachers, our administrators, everyone. So I, I will reject the notion that anyone in this district has a goal not to open school. But as even through this discussion, it is so difficult because of so many i- issues that are connected to it. Um, so uh, uh, you know, I think that's it. We all are absolutely working towards that goal. Um, as we said, the task force met today for over two hours and the information is not available within the hour to get it out. I would just also say too, this is the uh, reorg meeting, and typically we do talk about these in the agenda meetings, which would be next week, as which, of course, would be available then. Um, a- a- and the people who are on the task force, I am, I've been on the task force. And um, I, I personally, I could ask Mr. Sittadino, I think anybody, either the district employees, the board members are fine to um, say who they are. Um, the, and I know uh, Ms. Menemoe had called in, she was on it. We have multiple parents on it to refer, represent different levels, elementary, special ed, middle school, high school. What I don't, and this is my personal opinion, is those volunteers are volunteering their time. I asked to be elected to this position. So if people want to harass me, if they are angry at me, if they discuss it, uh, you know, on Facebook, I've been off Facebook, I had asked for this position, so it's okay. I mean, well, let me back up. I don't think it's okay. I think some people's attitudes, we've crossed a line in our society. But I asked for this position, and our educators and all that, this is their job. The people for the public volunteering hours and hours have not asked for that harassment, and that would be my concern about giving the public their name. Um, so that's just, again, my opinion on that. So uh, I think, again, we are all dedicated for the same thing, is to get everyone back into the school as quickly as we can. We're hopeful with the vaccine, we were talking about that today. How can we get our teachers, everyone who wants to be vaccinated, vaccinated? And every teacher I talk to wants, wants to get vaccinated, wants to get back in the classroom, that they have families. They are the ones at risk. We've luckily seen that most children are more uh, passive on, right? However, we've seen children get sick. So I think we have to remember, people in this town, 106 people have died. This is real, so we have to balance that. So we will continue to work towards that. Uh, next week, we'll meet again, you know, continue to share the information, consider, you know, share new ideas. That's what we're here for and we want to do that. So I, again, I appreciate everyone speaking out, sharing your uh, your opinion. We are here to, we listen to it. I tell you, we, we, we do take it to heart. Um, it's the people on the task force, thank you, especially the families, the parents, and uh, good luck, uh, Jill. I will give you a crash course next week on June, uh, and uh, but if any, any assistance you need, you know, I will be here for you and uh, Ms. Burns, congratulations.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. We're into 2021. Can only get back.
I want my money back. The trial's over. Um, anybody else would like to speak? Anybody from the board? No? Okay. Um, alright, so seeing nobody else wants to speak, I am just going to say, Kelly, you pretty much took the words right out of my mouth. Um, a lot of things that you said, I was thinking the same things, and I was going to say the same, very, very same things. Um, I, I really do appreciate all of the callers, and I, I totally appreciate all of their concerns. And as Kelly said, there is not one person on this call in the task force, in the district, that doesn't want to get our kids back to school. Not one. And there are conversations that are had, and you know, we did, and again, as, as Kelly mentioned, I was going to say also, this is a reorg meeting, and our task force did literally just end an hour before this meeting started. This is not our agenda meeting. Our agenda meeting is next week. So it's not, you know, someone said, you know, he, Mr. Sittadino came unprepared. No, no. He has to collect all his data. He has to um, tell his, his administrators, his principals, the, the board before it goes out, and that's the process. And that's, that's not about not being transparent. That's just, the data's just got to be collected, it's got to be put together. This is not an agenda meeting. This is a reorg meeting. So there will be another opportunity to have a meeting next week. And I'm sure that all of that uh, information will be available to everyone. So please, it's a little bit of a bone of contention with me when people talk about transparency because there is total transparency in this district. Um, ask a question, it will be answered to the best of anyone's ability. So um, uh, you know, but I appreciate the, the concerns and the questions, but please understand, this is the reorg meeting. This is not a regular agenda meeting. So all of that information will be out. Um, and again, I am also on the reentry task force, and um, you know, so I am there, it was a, I think it was a three-hour meeting today. And uh, lots of different ideas. Every idea has been floated and discussed and sometimes argued and, you know, um, tears and, you know, all of these things are discussed. And um, so, a- and I know that, that it's hard for people to, to really know that because they're not seeing the meeting. Um, and they don't know, and um, that's why when the information does come out, that's when, you know, when Mr. Sittadino compiles all of the information, um, you will know, you know, as soon as we know, as soon as it gets compiled. So um, with that, I'm going to leave that conversation, and I want to just speak to my girl Kelly. I did not speak, I didn't congratulate you on your last meeting in December, uh, because I knew you were going to start this meeting. So technically, the first half of this meeting was your last. But um, I just wanted to say, you know, I, it was such a great um, experience being your VP um, this past year, and um, also what everyone else has said there, I can't even imagine uh, anyone, you know, I have such really big shoes to fill. And um, we have had some really great uh, presidents. And uh, again, my president, my predecessors have all been fantastic, really great, really large shoes to fill. You have been fantastic, especially with your tech savvy. I might, I might have you be the tech person. Um, no, I'll try to, I'll figure it out. But um, I, your, your passion and your um, dedication to this district is just inspiring to me. So um, hopefully, you're not going to go anywhere. I know where you are. I have your phone number, and I know where you live. So um, I, I look forward to, to calling on you and, and the other past presidents that are, that are still on this board. We have a lot of really, really experienced um, people on this board. Um, Frank, welcome. I look forward to working with you. Um, we're all in this together, guys, and um, I think together we will do this. The vaccine is coming out. It's coming out. It's coming out slowly, but it's coming out. I'm registered. I have no idea when it's going to happen. Um, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel. So again, I appreciate all of the callers that called in, and hopefully your questions got answered. And uh, I just wish everyone a Happy New Year and thank you very much for this opportunity to serve. And if there is nobody else that has anything to say, I think, are we adjourned?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. Was that Frank?
Yes.
Alright, and do I have a second?
One more second.
Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are closed at 9:17. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.